Welcome, everyone. We'll call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I am in council chambers. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Murphy. Masias.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian. Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
All right. We have no remote electronic attendance. Is there public comment, Chief?
No.
Okay. So we'll start with our presentations. 5.1, Moline Parks and Recreation Youth Advisory Board Certificate of Appreciation. Mr. Griffin.
Really quick. This came out of a state conference probably three or four years ago that I attended, but didn't really know how to implement it. And about a year, year and a half ago, the mayor was having a conversation with one of our staff members about trying to get the youth more involved into our programming. And I was like, I think we have the perfect idea. And so we went into this not really knowing exactly what we were going to do with the board. And we really didn't know how many students we were going to get. And I actually, this started before Nathan Bertha, he's been with us since October. This started before he got on board, but soon as he was hired, we turned it over to him. And I think the students on the board and Nathan really took to heart what they wanted to do and really got a lot of input from them. And so because they're the first group and they've done some really great programming, I just wanted City Council to know exactly what they've done and show our appreciation to it. So I'm going to give Nathan just a little bit to explain what they've all done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. The Youth Advisory Board was created to address a community need, right? In community recreation, there's often a tendency for us to only serve maybe the oldest and the youngest edges of society, with ages, say, 13 to 55 sort of being left to fend for themselves. So among that age group that I just mentioned, teenagers are often the most neglected, right? So let's face it, teens are hard. They're tough, right? I certainly know the crew behind me here, my Youth Advisory Board is always the first to call me lame and old, and that's, you know, that's perfectly fine with me. But that disconnect is exactly what we need. That's exactly why these young men and women behind me are so important. With nothing but honesty and authenticity, they guide us. They guide us on marketing, events, programs, right? And they do it in ways that are true and authentic to them, and that's what's really important. So in the short time that they've all been together, this group has accomplished more than I could have possibly dreamed, right? So first off, they created, implemented, designed, executed the Frost and Fire Festival, which was a large-scale winter festival that we had at Riverside Park. They also created, designed, implemented, executed a highly successful team pickleball tournament in June that we had. They are also responsible for the creation of Moline Parks and Recs TikTok. And regularly provide us old folks with cool hip trends and dances and all that good stuff. So working with this group has been truly the most rewarding experience in my whole career, and I'm so very grateful and thankful to have known them and met them and got to work with them and know them more. I truly cannot wait to see what's in store for next year. So if you guys don't mind, I'd like to call them up and offer a certificate of appreciation for them. So first up, Liam Woodward. Corinna Zemec. Morrison Frye. Lauren Glessner. Sophia Kelly. Maya Lothrich. Blue Roland. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work. So we'll continue to 5.2, Payments to Agencies. Mr. Vitas.
Well, this brings us to the conclusion of the request for next fiscal year, fiscal year 2026. We have a number of presentations this evening. Here we go. So we go to our summary. So first up this evening is Alex Elias with Renew Moline, who represents Renew Moline, the Moline Center, as well as the Moline CDC.
Good evening, Mayor Raye Putty, members of the council. I have a short presentation, just highlighting some things that we work on, on your behalf. So as you know, that we have been in a public-private partnership since 1991, and we have been proud and happy to work with the city alongside of you. Renew Moline, over the last year or so, has done a number of activities directly related to supporting the Riverfront and Center Plan. We're looking forward to seeing that go forward this evening. The public market study, which many of you saw in April, a presentation. More recently, we have completed the River Edge Redevelopment Zone application for the city and are looking forward to seeing that go forward. We're also working on an affordable concept, 52 units for the parking lot behind the J.C. Penney Building. So we donated the building and the parking lot. We sold the building. We kept the parking lot. So we really, the goal there really is to maximize development and to support the production of housing. I'll talk a little bit more about MCDC and Moline Center. We've also been involved in an issue at the county level that I believe is important to the city, and that is to allow another tool in the toolbox to create affordable housing, and that's called a preferential assessment. So we have supported the city's effort to get that adopted. It basically involves a lowering of the assessment of affordable housing projects. So if you provide 10% or 15% of the units in a new project, you enjoy a tax benefit for that, and we think that's really important. And then I continue to sit on one of the chambers' business advisory committees and alongside Western Illinois, as they've recently asked for funding, and traveled to Springfield on a number of topics. So I won't go through these in detail. Many of you that are on the project management team see Kirk Marsky on a regular basis and hear all the wonderful things he's doing. I think our relationship, supporting this program for the city, has really expanded our reach and solidified the way that we work. In the past, it was sort of like, well, how do you work with Moline Center? And I think now we have some really good answers. And Kirk has done a great job in a lot of these things, really creating relationships among the merchants, working with Director Mathias to do some sidewalk dining grants and do some permitting support, just when they have questions, helping them through that process. We've done a number of new business ribbon cuttings that many of you have participated in, and we're happy to see those. You know, the Go See Do brochure is something that our visitors grab on their way from the pavilion to River House when they go for lunch. And then Kirk has really designed and repaired those kiosks. They had lighting in there that wasn't working, some of them were cracked, and so he's really gotten that back into a normal schedule of information going out to the community. And then, of course, Holiday Hop and Lighting on the Commons are two of his big things. And then, as the viaduct gets under construction here very soon, Kirk's really been the center of information for some of our merchants and trying to encourage them to park off-site. So we really reserve a lot of those parking areas for our businesses and those customers first. So employees, including our Renew Moline staff, will be parking elsewhere during that construction period. So Kirk's been great about that. We've had a variety of different activities that are happening downtown, including an Augustana Pollinator Project. We, as a group, our staff did the Certified Tourism Ambassador Class with VisiQuot Cities. And then we've had just other events, the Cleanup Day, and, as I said, some merchant mixers. I also wanted to highlight, too, a couple of programs that I'm not going to be able to talk very much about because I'm not a techie. So Kirk has done a great job of creating interactive ways for people to experience downtown, including this E-Atlas Adventure. And so if you've done the walking tour, that is the historic walking tour, this is a more animated version of it. So it encourages you to participate in different ways in the downtown and provides a lot more information. So Kirk's been excited about this. He just launched it on one of the Riverrine Walks that he did at the end of June. And then we also, he's also created something called the Vibe Map. And this is more of an event-based activity center. So if you're looking for something to do in downtown Moline, this Vibe Map is AI-powered. So it searches social media and other things to look for activities that are going on just in downtown Moline. A lot of our information about events and things are regional, and so that's great, but this is very specific to downtown Moline. So that's just a few images from that. Moline Community Development Corporation, we continue to support them as they kind of transition. We will be doing some more heavy lifting and some more work in really trying to find ways to create affordable housing, period, whatever it takes. And so I really want to emphasize that. MCDC has the potential to be our partner in that. They have a board that represents those neighborhoods that critically need affordable housing, and so we're happy for that partnership and happy to continue to support them. Handy at Home just finished its second year at the end of June. One of the things that I've loved about this program, which I've said here before, is that this is reaching low-income homeowners. And that is not a population we directly have access to very often, but it's so critical to keep them in their homes. And so really enjoyed seeing where that Handy at Home has gone. So on behalf of the small but mighty Renew Crew, as we call ourselves, that's Crystal there in the middle, she's the glue that holds everything together, Kirk and myself, and our 29-member Board of Directors, thank you very much. We are grateful for the partnership and so proud to be in Moline. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from Ms. Elias? No? Thank you for your thorough report. Who's up next?
All right. So next up will be the Quad City Open Network, which is a new request for 2026.
Oh, we see Level Up.
Oh, I didn't look up.
Project Now.
Well, we're going to bounce around then.
Yeah.
So the next up then will be Project Now to present the Level Up Program, which is now entering, I believe this would be the second full year, and a request for 2026.
Reverend Ford. Thank you. Good evening to Madam Mayor and to the council and to the staff. This is our opportunity to kind of share what we are learning in the development and the data that proves so useful in the commitment we have for the citizenry. The hope is that we can actually rebuild lives and strengthen communities, particularly the city of Moline, as we move forward. As you know, when poverty hits a household, it explodes like a bomb. It doesn't take them down to level ground, it takes them sub-level. It's described as a socioeconomic basement of the American dream. Our responsibility is to get people back to the level ground, level them up, and then assist them as they take big, bold steps up and out. Part of my responsibility is to talk very quickly and kind of shape the data that will come behind us. I have to do this through narrative and story. In 1945, Warsaw Poland was leveled to the ground absolutely. Eighty-five percent of it, the city was devastated after the uprising and their unfortunate reality of not being able to overthrow Germany at that time. With that said, there were a number of people on the ground that was looking at the devastation that immediately stepped in. That's what Level Up does. It allows us to intervene and step in immediately after poverty has hit a household. It took decades, took a amount of time, for them to totally restore and build back. They didn't even have the design and plans. They had to rebuild off of imagination, photographs, and paintings of what the city used to look like. And what this program has allowed us to use is a sense of moral imagination of what's possible when good people lean forward and decide to do something with the valuable resources it has for those that are going through a level of devastation, disruption, and discontinuation of their commitment to the American dream. Eventually, it got rebuilt, and many now enjoy the city that once went through an absolute devastation. We're having those stories now. You'll hear some of them, of people now that have leveled up, and their stories tell how a commitment of investments, and I use that term strategically, investments, because you and I should expect a return, society should, on the investments that are made. And the commitments that we have for Class A and Class B, most of the commitments fall within three categories, as you are aware of housing, essentially the commitment with utilities and transportation, car repair, some commitments for registration and payment to keep the family moving forward. I'm thankful for this work. Because of these funds, we're able to essentially benefit as a collective, city and community and region because of what you have decided to do. These funds are imaginative in the sense that we broke through barriers and thought differently, but there are also investments that have accountability in the data. You're going to have the data so that you can make a set of decisions about how we move forward together. But I wanted to say at the front and forward, thank you, because these investments not only have secured individuals, they have saved lives. Eight hundred people die a day of poverty, 250,000 a year, from things that we can prevent. And I'm thankful that we have a chance to do it right here in the city of Moline.
So I will be brief. Ron Lund, Chief Operating Officer for Project Now. All of these numbers were provided in the presentation. However, of the individuals that we served, we served 31 households this last year in Part A. As a reminder, Part A is our $400 a month, monthly stipend, so a max of $4,800. That 31 households included 37 adults and 55 children. Part B was a $2,000 emergency allocation, 22 households, which was 26 adults and 31 children, for a total of 57 households provided assistance out of this funding. As a reminder, as this is year two, year one, it took a slow start to get rolling. However, the reason for that is we worked with the state to get these funds exempted from the other state benefit programs, i.e. any of the assistance that these families receive do not negatively affect them when they apply for LIHEAP or rental assistance or anything like that. That took a little bit of process. I admit, the state was a little slow on that one. In addition to the Level Up Funds, Project Now provided an additional $932,000 into the city of Moline for residents. And then essentially, as far as the request goes, I do believe that it will be flat funding this year. So as a reminder, that would be $168,000 for Part A, which would help 35 families, $60,000, which would help up to a minimum of $30,000, and then $12,000 for our intern, which is a Moline resident, and then $24,000 for the administrative of the program, for a total of $264,000.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Jordan from Project Now. I'm the Director of Housing. I had the joy tonight to tell you about two stories, about individuals, about your investment in Level Up, and how your return of investment is making a difference in lives. These two families enrolled in our first year, and they re-enrolled in year two. But I'd like to tell you that this is going to be the last year that they need you, because we have successfully allowed them to take care of themselves, and your investment changed their lives. One of them is a single female who is 62, who underwent traumatic health conditions. When she entered Level Up, she needed that investment monthly to make ends meet on top of her Social Security, which was minimal. She is now going to be and is a substitute nurse in a local school district, so she will have the ability to maintain her household past Level Up. And last but least is probably the biggest shining star of all. I got a phone call yesterday from this mother, who many of you met at Christmas time when we had our celebration, who used her Level Up investment to go back to school to be a medical assistant at a local medical center. And she is going to receive, because she just graduated, she's going to receive a $3-an-hour raise. She is now able to maneuver her schedule to take care of her family and no longer has to struggle understanding why she's got to maybe move money around. So your investment changes lives. We see this every single day. $400 does not sound like a lot, but it is life-changing for those families connected to resources, and they do have the ability to make a difference. Thank you again for this investment.
You've heard and received the data and then the narrative of the captured stories and the lived experience of so many that have already crossed the line. We maintain healthy relationships with them throughout the process. They are part of the Project Now family and resident, of course, of the city of Moline. Our sincere hope is that we get more over the line, that we can raise them up not just to a level playing field, but we can lift them up a little higher through this process, and that they would, in fact, be part of the contributing tax base that allows others to be helped. I'm thankful for this program. I'm thankful for the wonderful team that we have, interns and staff and case management. And Ron provides oversight as the Chief Operating Officer. If there are any questions, we would love to entertain and be able to provide answers or clarity.
I see smiles. Mr. McNeil.
Well, I'm just smiling and thank you, Reverend Ford and the staff of Project Now, because I have trouble keeping up with acronyms. So the $932,000, that's like utility bill assistance, and is that?
Yes. Right.
Is that through state programs? State funds or federal?
Such like LIHEAP, that is a pass-through, some fed mixed with state, so Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program.
I'll remember.
So we do have a tendency to use all of the jargon of the industry.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Castro.
On the same page on the Barrier Reduction Plan, what is that?
So the Barrier Reduction Plan is a program that is funded by DHS that runs through our state association. It is similar to your Part B. It really, for lack of a better term, it's Part B for our entire service area.
So even if a person is enrolled in Level Up and they needed additional assistance, they would still be able to apply for the other additional assistance that you guys offer?
Yes. Nothing, as it relates to their eligibility for Level Up, negatively affects them for any other program.
Thank you.
And that is because of policy change. So we had to actually change the policies at the state to be able to allow the leveraging of resources and not have it count against that family as income that they're generating by work in itself.
That's a best practice that was recommended by the folks that have instituted, helped communities institute this across the country. Are there other questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Masias.
Just a comment, commending you on the work that you're doing in cities, municipalities, states, even federal. We always tend to invest in businesses and development and all that stuff, but we forget the individuals are, like you said, an investment. And I'm sure the employers that hired the individuals who got their degrees or certificates were happy to have employees. So I really commend everybody who worked on this. It's a very creative program, especially nowadays, as we're seeing clawbacks in federal funding for a lot of Dole programs. So I commend everybody that's been involved with this for being creative and actually ahead of the curve, as we're seeing. We're better prepared to deal with some of these negative effects to Dole programs, I think, than other communities will be. So thank you for being a great partner.
Thank you, Alderman, for bringing that up. Actually, the city of Moline had extraordinary foresight and insight. Who knew that we would be standing before you with the level of cuts that are on the horizon? We can see the storm coming over the tops of the cornfields. We know it's headed this way. The truth of the matter is, as we think about SNAP dollars and Medicaid and how much that impacts the total of community, 40% of the babies born are born with Medicaid assistance. Much of the transportation that's seen used is utilized through Medicaid as well. When we start talking about SNAP, when you look at grocery stores, convenience stores, even in our rural landscapes, 50% of their revenue is a SNAP investment. Without those dollars, something bad is going to happen to the infrastructure. And the imagination is, what I said earlier, the moral imagination of what to do and the insight of putting something in place to secure 116% homelessness rise in the last year in the state of Illinois, 44% here. This region has, we're number six on deep pocket or extreme poverty pocket within the state. I'm not proud of that. I want us off that list. And the way to do that is to make these investments and to be able to have the returns that we are seeing. To your point, when you make an investment into the life of a person, we will all yield a lifetime of return. And that's something that I believe is well worth the time and effort.
Thank you. I will say, I noted you acknowledging that level funding is a minimal request, and we know that in your presentation, there's actually a request for increased funding. I think the council has a lot to weigh as we get to budget season, but you make a good point about plugging the holes. And when it comes to food insecurity and other things, perhaps we'll need to look at the full request to see if that's a smart investment of dollars compared to all the other needs we have that will prevent increased need of dollars down the road, since we're missing, and potentially will be missing SNAP and all of that. Just a thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now QCon, right?
Now QCon. Yes, come on up. So Cecilia Bailey is our Executive Director for the Open Cities Network, and she is making a first-time request of the council for funds through the Payments to Agencies. So with that, please, Cecilia.
I think that, thank you, council, for allowing me to speak about this exciting new project. But I think the projects and the way that the presentations went, just that was how it was supposed to be. I appreciate the partnership that we have with Project Now, as Ron Lund also sits on the Quad Cities Open Networks Board. And so as Reverend Ford is talking about infrastructure builds and looking at socioeconomic interests, this project, this is fitting. So again, I am Cecilia Bailey, and the Executive Director of the Quad Cities Open Network. And the Quad Cities Open Network often sits in the dark. So we are known as a backbone agency. We are a B2B. So we work with our not-for-profit agencies, looking at social infrastructure requests and gaps in services, and looking for initiatives that can help our, first, our organizations, but then our overall community, and really excelling forward. So I have the privilege of sitting as the Vice Chair of the Quad Cities Council Housing Cluster, which the city of Moline is also a part of, as well as sitting on the Board of the Illinois Partners in Human Services, where we look at advocacy. My role in QCon is to look at behavioral health and housing, so initiatives that focus on behavioral health and housing, from looking at the gaps, again, that we find through our programs. QCon has traditionally worked in the information or referral space, and so that is where our success traditionally comes from, is being able to connect services across the board. So we connect other organizations to other organizations so they are able to make closed referrals. We also hold the Supplemental Emergency Assistance Program, so that is the SEEP program acronym, that allows for emergency assistance. It is right now at a $500 level, because as Reverend Ford has pointed out, we also find that that $400, $500 level is the right level to help people in extreme emergencies. And so with those two pieces of information, an information and referral system, as well as the Supplemental Emergency Assistance Program, we can see gaps in the community, and then we can work with our partner agencies and our other collaborative roles to build initiatives around that. We have found successes. You may recognize me. You've seen me before, not for request, but for proclamation. So we have successes in the Zero Suicide Initiative. We were successful in implementing that for three years running. We trained 1,084 people in suicide prevention through that work. We also did a 1,000-day ad campaign, and then we brought the Walk for Zero Suicide to this area, actually, you know, right here across the I-74 Bridge. So we have experience working collaboratively in that way. This project stems from our partnership and our other successes coming from our eviction diversion program that we have operated with Salvation Army and Iowa Legal Aid for the last year at the Scott County Eviction Diversion Program, which looks similar to what Project Now and Prairie State Legal have at the Rock Island County Eviction Diversion. Now and Prairie State Legal have at the Rock Island County eviction diversion court. A little different in that Scott County tends to need a pot of money to help people stay housed more urgently than the city of Moline and others in the Rock Island County tend to give the agencies time to work through those solutions where Scott County doesn't. So we have been successful in working with those partner agencies and having a pool of dollars, being able to offer those immediately and then again, looking to see how eviction diversion works. We also worked with the Davenport Public Library to pilot what we are talking about again today. And so we were very successful in watching, the Davenport Public Library was the first city to house a social worker and that is actually a QCon project. So again, most people don't know that, but that project comes out of QCon and at that time, Amy Grosskopf, the library director, sat on the QCon board and so that is a QCon initiative. And through that project, the social worker in three years served 8,040 families on her own at eviction diversion court. This year, one year, 1,000, I think it's 894 families that Salvation Army saw and 326, how did I get that first, that Iowa Legal Aid was able to successfully prevent from eviction. Those numbers are huge in Scott County. So I go into my pitch. As my partners have pointed out, we, they often interface with people who are in their survival home, right? They are in fight, flight, freeze, funk. They are either people pleasing, saying what they need to say in order to try to get services. They're fighting help. They absolutely don't know what to do. Whatever the fight, fight, funk, freeze response might be, that survival mode of people enter and that is what my partner agencies see every single day. Right now, even with a strong collaborative backing that we have from our partnership, it is still, that is still difficult when someone is in trouble to try to get assistance, right? They're not really sure where to turn, where to start. Getting partners to be able to talk to one another, to case manage is often difficult. But we see this as an opportunity. So with housing near collapse, with partners and affordable housing projects underway, the Silos Solutions Program coming into vision, we saw this, QCon is an opportunity to look at what the issues were so we could then look at solutions. So in 2023, QCon held many focus groups and we looked at what were the issues facing this housing issue, this homeless issue, as well as just generalized social determinants of health. So we found naturally that there's a severe lack of submission agency and program funds, shallow referrals, a complete lack of referral process, lack of awareness of other agencies' program eligibility and available services, and then practices that simply promote Band-Aid solutions. And so in order to do, to fight that, we looked at what would help. And so obviously, greater funds, greater funds available to the sector for housing would be what would ultimately help. But while we are looking for those funds, we know that clearer referral protocols for homeless diversion would be effective and we know that expanding the SEEP dollars, the pool of flexible dollars available to agencies to offset emergencies, but looking at both proactively as well as reactively would also be beneficial. So again, an opportunity. Right now, what we see when our partners or our case managers are working is kind of a chaotic system. When we look at the coordinated entry process for housing itself, we have one system in Rock Island County and Scott County that people come in and they go onto a list and they are pulled from that list when they're looking at housing programs. But for the social determinants of health or those who do not fit that list, it becomes quite chaotic with someone not having a generalized case manager or a specific access point in order to get to those services. So what we envision is a neutral starting point for the community. When they don't know where to turn, they always can go to a library. A library, that is its ethos. That is where it sits. We know that a library is meant to be a neutral spot for the community to have access to information. So for us, it seems super smart to be able to share resources and to get folks in library structure along with our school structure and along with our partners, having access to case managers, but always, always having a social worker. So when somebody doesn't have any idea where to go, they know they can start in a library. What does this mean for the overall housing collaboration? Well, we know when renewed Moline, when we spoke about affordable housing, Project Now spoke, the answer overall is affordable housing units. We know that. But there's all these other pieces of the puzzle that have to work together. We are not competitors. We are all handling different pieces of the puzzle to try to get people where they need. So when we talk about this project and where it fits in the generalized community plan, I draw attention to the Silos Solutions that I brought up earlier. So the vision that was created by the Silos Solutions team was that of overall affordable housing plan and structure and each of us were charged with a piece of the puzzle. And so Quad Cities Open Network was charged with the provision piece, so that is this piece that looks at social determinants of health and how to get people connected out. So again, I point this out so that you know that we are not looking to compete with our partner agencies. We are simply fulfilling what was asked of us in the Silos Solutions vision. So what does that look like? This looks like a total commitment over three years of about $298,048. I have talked with Madam Mayor as well as others and so we are really looking for this to be the pilot city of Moline on the Illinois side to so that this social work program could essentially work. What we would really like to see is shared social workers in the library system. So what we will be seeking to pilot in future years, provided that our partner agencies and our partner cities provide funding, is to be able to find the cities that need full-time social workers and leave a full-time social worker there and find the cities who don't, but another city potentially can't afford a full-time social worker and be able to share that social worker. So again, we're really looking this year to pilot out to see what it looks like for the city of Moline and then looking in future years, hopefully, specifically with the city of Moline to potentially partner with the city of East Moline. But again, we will see. So what does that role look like? Again, that is having someone, a social worker at the city of Moline library that is a generalized shared social worker. They will be able to answer questions and connect people to services right there at the library. They will also be able to case manage and manage for city of Moline's other projects that they are coming, that are coming along with the new housing structure that are requiring case management. This social worker will also be able to take on those clients as a part of their caseload. So again, looking at really making good use of funds and collaborating where it's necessary and where it would be helpful. So the social worker, again, eventually we presume will split between Moline and East Moline, although again, time will tell. We might very well find that a social worker is full-time needed at Moline Library and if that is accurate, then we will look to get a shared position of East Moline for somewhere else. We do believe East Moline will not need a full-time social worker. And then as we bring more social workers online, we will evaluate, we'll share gaps, we'll look at data and then we'll make, we'll make determinations there. Again, I point out that we did pilot this program for three years with the Davenport Library and we found that Quinn, we miss Quinn, Quinn is not at the Davenport Library right now, but she saw 8,000, I have to say that number again, 8,400 people in three years herself. Quad Cities Open Network, all the partners, the project are Quad Cities Open Network members. Quad Cities Open Network job is to bring forth IRS, our information and referral system so that we make sure that people can connect up to resources effectively and efficiently as well as our Find Help platform. We partner with Unity Point as well as looking to further our partnership with Community Healthcare, Mercy One for our Find Help platform. So we will be bringing our information and referral system to the table. We will bring our flexible pool of dollars to the table so that way, we often know that it's first a transaction before the relationship, which we know the relationship is what matters first, but in crisis, often the person needs that transaction first so that SEEP, that having that availability of SEEP dollars would be extremely important. And then we, again, we serve as a think tank. So looking at the data, we then bring our partners to the table and then we look at ways to improve infrastructure as well as to support other initiatives. So you will see QCon probably other places with letters of support for other projects that are ongoing because we know it's not just our QCon initiatives that will make this work. Our partner agencies have to succeed as well. The current partnership for the project that was ongoing were Salvation Army, Humility Homes and Services and Davenport Library. Again, we're seeking on the Illinois side to have Illinois partners with city of Moline coming up as number one there. And then of course, I bring it back to QC Housing Cluster. The city of Moline and all of the current partners that are working on housing projects in QCon are members of QC Housing Cluster. Again, I mentioned I'm the vice chair there. So when we are looking at this work, we are looking to make sure that we're furthering the vision of Silos Solutions as a whole. We will not solve homelessness without many more units. We know that that ultimately is the solution. So our goal with this project is to create a stopgap to mitigate our community's downward spiral, which is what Reverend Ford described. So again, I point out, this is what we look at. What we envision is, I think, really cool, just a really nice neutral spot, the easy button, as she calls it, to get people to services and so that we can help them. I end with this. If actions we are taking are not getting us to our goal of limiting homelessness, we need to adjust our actions. These are simply suggested starting points. We know that we will have to shift, we will have to be nimble, things will have to change. But if we don't start somewhere, we might as well keep spinning.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Castro.
So when I'm looking through the budget, is that showing that it's only in Moline the social worker is for that first year and then anticipating potentially it should be like three days in Moline, two days in?
Correct.
I had a very similar question because of the difference in the salaries. And this is maybe not necessarily a question for you, but maybe for Madam Mayor and Mr. Vitas. And this is just a question, it's not anything. I think this is a wonderful thing that we're looking at. Is there a reason why the city would not employ a social worker on our own at the library rather than having a different organization run the program?
My conversations with you and knowledge of things, you can answer too, but?
I will.
I would say the oversight that an organization who has done this before would bring is better than asking our director staff to provide that oversight even more because it is a different job than the embedded social workers with the police department. Oversight and strength of knowing the field is absolutely.
I cannot add anything better than that.
I can add that downtown infacted try that they did employ the social worker and as we look to reopen that position, we're changing the way that we're doing it because they also found similarly that they would be best served to have a social service agency, one of our partner agencies who work with social workers manage that side of things.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you Cecilia for sharing more. So I was generally familiar with the program with Davenport, but I made some assumptions that it was the downtown branch and then the social worker met the individuals and families that were coming in that needed help. But with those service numbers, there's referrals too? And then how does that work with other social service agencies and who's making the referrals?
Sure. So what we saw was Quinn, she rotated through all the Davenport libraries. So she was at every branch. And then what she often saw was a family that would come in that was either homeless or is a frequent flyer of the library and so she would work with those families to get them connected out. But what we also saw was partner agencies or people who didn't know where to start and our partner agencies couldn't help them without walking through them through intake and maybe we weren't there yet. We use Quinn as that approach. So we were able to send people to Quinn as that neutral starting point when we didn't know where to start.
Thank you. Any further, yes, Mr. McNeil.
Thank you. So say it's split and somebody needs help on Monday and Monday's this person's in East Moline, will they still help them no matter where they live?
Yes. So in the next layer of this, this is the big, I guess, of the layer, because it's a, but we are also looking at what it looks like to float and then what telehealth services look like. So would it be, would the capability be there? We've been working actually IH Mississippi Valley Credit Union to what an IT, item looks like. So what does it look like in a library structure to have social workers that are kind of wherever they are? And it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter if they're onsite or not, anyone could still walk in and access services.
Thank you. Anything further from the council? Thank you so much for commenting. All right, we move to our questions on the agenda. I do have a few clarifications. So item 7.8, staff has made some non-substantive changes to the Second Amendment agreement. Everyone has a copy of the redlined version and a clean copy of that agreement at their seat. And item 7.11 was revised to add the city of Cold Valley and the attachments are correct. The motion as listed on the agenda does not list Cold Valley. So when I make the motion, I will read the updated wording. So we will move to our committee of the whole agenda items. 7.1, a resolution authorizing the director of engineering to execute a proposal for engineering services with IMAG Corporation for improvements on 38th Avenue, 34th to 35th Street, and design of a sanitary sewer lift station and force main for an amount not to exceed $142,000. Mr. Vitas.
Yes, Mayor, council, very happy to announce that we'd like to move forward with IMAG for the improvements that the mayor read so that we can advance the Texas Roadhouse project that is sitting there waiting in the books to get going. So this is our first foray into doing the design work necessary for the sanitary sewer work and the street design.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Vias. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. 7.2, a resolution approving change order number one and final with Collins Concrete reiterated for project number 142, 2025 alley reconstruction for the amount of $3,806.45. Vitas?
Again, staff is recommending approval of the final change order for the work that was done in Ward, I believe that was Ward 1.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. 7.3, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 35, altered speed limits by reducing the speed limit along 50th and 51st avenues to 20 miles per hour from 60th Street East to Green Valley Park. Vitas?
Staff is recommending approval based on approval from the Traffic Engineering Committee, sorry to move that forward, reducing that speed limit to 20 miles per hour on both of the streets leading toward Green Valley Park.
Motion to approve? Second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? I just have a quick question, maybe this is for Chief Galt. Had there been an increase, or maybe, if Dryer's on the phone, had there been an increase in incidents down there, accidents?
I don't know if there are any traffic crashes, per se, but we did have a complaint from one of the residents, and we worked with Officer Russell in developing the proposal for reducing the speed limit. So I don't know if the chief knows anything about crash. I don't think there were a crash problem, it's a pretty low-volume street, except during special events.
Yeah, so I ran the soccer club down there for 19 years, so I do have some perspective of the volume of families and kids down there, that every soccer tournament that they have down there brings in about 2,000 people, and this is not a lot of parking. I think, just generally from my experience, it's more of a perception issue. It'd be very difficult to get up to 30 miles an hour in that short span, anyway, but I think making everyone aware that it's 20 mile an hour slower speed limit, and just updating the signage there just makes sense.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McNamara?
I just, I was only involved with the Moline Soccer Club for three years. I am pleased to see this, but just with process, in the notes it said that, per Matt Russell, there were no crash reports from '21 to present. But my question for maybe David is usually with the Traffic Engineering Committee, that we will not make this recommendation without. Is that fair or correct?
Can everybody hear me? I'm not sure.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. We will make recommended changes based on more than just the crash history. Given the special events and the narrow nature and people parking along the side of the road and things, the committee felt it was an appropriate change. So there was more than just the crash history.
Thank you. And if there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 7.4, an ordinance amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicle and Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 10 thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing 9th Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of 110 feet, and adding 9th Street on the east side from Railroad Avenue South for a distance of 85 feet, and amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Appendix 11 thereof, parking prohibited at certain times, by adding on Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., 9th Street on the east side, beginning at a point 85 feet south of Railroad Avenue extending south for 30 feet. Mr. Vitas or Mr. Dryer?
Staff is recommending approval of the recommendation.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Vassius?
I just want to thank David Dryer for moving on this, because we did have a business there that needs some space. We had some residents that kind of pushed back, saying, "Well, they took too much space." So there was a good compromise that actually was presented by one of the residents, saying, "Well, they don't need it after hours or on weekends," and sure enough, that freed up a space for during weekends and night hours. So, thank you for, you know, listening to the concerns of citizens who were, one was very, very persistent, but then I did have another resident who called, but it seems like there's also an issue with some of the residents who sometimes park work trailers. So there could be other things that are causing more issues. So, thank you again, but I think there could be more calls. I might have to work with the chief on that part.
I do appreciate you pointing out compromise. Helpful, thank you. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 7.5, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number 1 to the April 18, 2023 Agreement for General Services, South Slope Wastewater Treatment Facility with Strand Associates, Inc., for additional design, project bidding services, and construction-related services for South Slope Water Reclamation Facility, modifications and improvements in the amount of $8,946,900, and the Director of Utilities to execute any necessary documents related to this work.
Oh, boy, here we go. So, with us tonight, Troy, you can come on up as well, in case there's questions. So, we're going to recommend approval of entering into this amendment agreement with Strand, Strand Associates, for the South Slope Treatment Plant Project. It's a 51-month project. It's a solid 48 months of construction, and on the end of that, there'll be training involved for the entire team, as well as operations and maintenance manuals that need to be developed for that facility to operate. When it's built, when it's completed, four years from now, and I'm right, 48 months, it'll be a new plant. It'll be kind of a new, a new beginning for operations at South Slope, and it will address all of our regulatory requirements that we need to address, and hence the reason for the project. One is the age of the project, and then two is regulatory requirements. I want to also, at this point, before we vote on this, or have you vote on this, is, you know, thank Troy for his heavy lift in terms of the financing for this project, because as you know, this project was all over. When we started four years ago, we were talking about $68 million, then we got up to $72 million, then we got up to $78 million, and here we are at $114 million in construction costs for this project. So, it has gone the full gamut as well, and I'm sure Carol probably had those numbers right, you know, because we talk about this project all the time. But he was able to work with the EPA, he was able to get the additional loan, which you have approved. So, we have a 40-year loan at a very low interest rate. There was a lot of heavy lifting on Troy's part, and thank you for that. It saved us from having to do a general obligation bond between a $78 million loan and then filling that gap with a GO bond. So, that actually saved us costs as well. So with that, we are strongly recommending approval of the agreement with Strand Associates for $8,946,900 to oversee the construction of the South Slope Wastewater Treatment Facility.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Schmidt. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 7.6, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application, enter into an agreement, and execute all necessary assurances and certifications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for Community Development Block Grant entitlement funding under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended for certain projects and programs identified in the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, and specifically in the 2025 Annual Action Plan, and approving the project and program recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Policy, approving the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, a strategic five-year plan for the use of community development block grant funds, as detailed in the plan's first chapter, 2025 Annual Action Plan, and authorizing the mayor to implement the approved projects and programs upon HUD's approval of the City of Moline's 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Annual Action Plan, and to exercise any and all powers necessary to obtain such funding and implement those projects. Mr. Vitas.
Mayor and Council, we are recommending approval of the document that was presented, as well as the revised summary that was provided to you at your desk this evening. As you know, this is a requirement for any HUD-funded programs, and we are adopting this five-year plan in accordance with those guidelines.
All, just for their explanation, the revisions were simply based on some cleanup that...
Correct, just language cleanup.
Language cleanup to more focus on Moline.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Questions, Mr. Schmidt?
So, when I'm looking at the Homelessness Needs Assessment overview, which is on page 256 in the paper copies, and it's on six and seven in the original, I'm curious as to why some of these items have been removed in this one. Up to this point in my review, I've seen it's all been something that's mentioned in other communities, but this, for instance, we took out the majority of individuals, served, reported mental health issues, chronic health conditions, or substance use disorders. And I'm just trying to understand what exactly we're trying to take out of here, and what that purpose is, overall.
I'll have KJ come forward.
All right, House Expert.
Good evening. As you've seen, the con plan is about 240 pages, and that's without the fluff in the back I still have to put. I still have to put all the forms from the minutes and all the assurances that the mayor's going to sign tonight if this is approved. So it becomes about a 260, 270-page document. So, what I tried to do in the summary is just try to summarize that plan. But basically, the con plan is going to cover the analysis of impediments, the housing needs assessment, and as you may recall, we went in a joint contract with City of Rock Island and City of Davenport. So that's the reason you see all the consistency of a lot of information. So I tried to clean that up and remove some of that reference to Davenport and Rock Island out of the summary, because normally I would just give you guys the plan. This year, I decided, okay, let me give them a summary, so they don't have to go through 240-plus pages. So in the summary, it doesn't have everything, but it has all that information in the plan. So our plan has already been reviewed by our regional office. We had a two-hour meeting with them today. In this plan, there's several key words that we have to modify before we send it in to headquarters, and the plan is due by this Friday.
So, when we are voting, we are approving the plan, the summary is just contextual. Am I reading that?
Correct, correct. You're approving the plan.
Is that correct legally as well?
Yes, because you have the plan as part of the documentation. So you're approving the consolidated plan, which talks about our priorities and our goals, and they're very much aligned with the city goals as well as HUD. Number one is housing, number two is infrastructure, number three is quality of life, and number four is economic development. And to address those in the 2025 plan, we have several programs. For housing, we have the homebuyers program, we have the rehab program, we have the homestead program. And then we also have a sub-recipient known as Salvation Army, who's going to help us with rental assistance. Then we have Christian Care, who's going to have a social, not a social worker, but an outreach worker on the street that we're helping fund. A couple of the quality of life programs would be the Parks Department with their childcare camp, we helped fund that. And then, a new one that we added in there, that we also addressed in path forward, and that was spoken of earlier, is adjusting the food insecurity. We've added food insecurity into the 2025 plan. It's a small amount, but we're just trying to build on what we have of the $807,000.
It's still like Mr. Adams to him, please.
The plan document that Ms. Welly has put together, it has certain questions that have to be answered in order to satisfy our responsibilities. And I have reviewed what she put together. I can't speak to how accurate her information is, but she did prepare everything in the proper format. So I can only speak to that. I wish I could give you a better answer, but she knows the subject matter far better than I do.
Again, the summary, in no way should reform upon this vote, will overrule what's in the plan, that's for sure.
The summary is not necessary in terms of the legal requirements for preparing the plan. The summary is helpful, but the summary is not a necessary part of it.
That's what I needed to understand, and then I'm not going to bother to keep looking through it. I wanted to understand that it was not...
Substantive change.
Substantive change, but yes, and I appreciated the summary. It'd get through that plan a whole lot easier, having read these a few years in a row, so very much appreciate it. So, thank you, sorry to be nitpicky as per usual.
Now, I'm going to recommend approval, and it's the heaviest lift, I believe, that you have all year long, if I'm not mistaken. And the 244-page plan is actually the last item on the attachments at the very bottom, all 244 pages, so...
Okay. If there's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Thank you.
7.7, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to the First Amendment to Land Lease Agreement between the City of Moline and GTP Acquisition Partners Two LLC for city-owned property located at the former 4213 16th Avenue Moline, now known as 1520 41st Street Moline, and authorizing the mayor, city clerk, city attorney, and city staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities and enforce each of the city's expected benefits as referred to in such agreement. Mr. Vitas.
Mayor, council staff is recommending approval of this land lease agreement, or amendment, First Amendment to the land lease agreement with GTP Acquisition Partners. We have a longstanding relationship with this group, and this would simply extend the relationship, as well as secure a very specific part of the property next to Water Tower, something that we started working on several years ago, actually. So I'm surprised it finally got to us. But yeah, this came up some time ago, and I'm just glad to see that we're going to be extending the lease, recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Resolution authorized, 7.8, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest to a Second Amendment to Development and Economic Incentive Agreement between the City of Moline and Dolan Commons LLC for the development project and to execute any necessary agreements referenced therein, and authorizing all appropriate city officers and staff to do all the things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to said agreement, and authorizing all appropriate city officers and staff to do all things necessary to complete each of the city's responsibilities pursuant to said agreement. I am not a lawyer, that is the closest. Goodness sake. Mr. Vitas?
Sure, just a general introduction. This agreement goes back to 2016 originally, was amended in 2018, and we're looking at a Second Amendment. The best part of this is that Chris was able to work with Mr. Dolan here in the audience with us tonight to bring about a better agreement for both parties, frankly, and one that has performance requirements in it, which will include the construction of housing, which as you know is a major, major issue for the city and for the Quad Cities. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris, because I think he's done an outstanding job of working with the Dolans to bring about a better agreement for the future.
Thanks, Mark. And Kevin Dolan, as Bob mentioned, Mr. Vitas mentioned in the audience. So for the past year, obviously, we've been bringing new projects, we're excited to do that, but we've also been dealing with projects that have been delayed. This resolution represents such an opportunity with the Second Amendment to Dolan Commons. So Dolan Commons, three-phase development project. For the 2016 agreement, three phases, Phase 1, renovate 30,000 square foot grocery store. Phase 2 was a separate 55 square foot commercial building. Phase 3 was a residential apartment building. Phase 1, going to 2018, Phase 1 was delivered, so the renovation was completed. The Phase 2 was not completed, and that led to the First Amendment. So with that First Amendment, the second phase was extended to 2022, and the third phase for housing was extended to 2027. 2022, Phase 2 was not delivered. 2023, there were conversations had at that time. Conversations began with Dolan presented alternate-phase approach. One of those was to expand the number of, the amount of square footage for the commercial facility in Phase 2, which resulted in elimination of the Phase 3 housing. So that conversation was had, was presented in '23, that was rejected by the city at that time. So in 2024, conversations got started again and resulted in the proposed Second Amendment. So, Phase 2 amended to be a minimum 1,000 square foot commercial building, target 2,000 square foot, and also addition of a car charging station, as well to be several car charging stations part of the complex. And Phase 3 brought back to the table as housing for 10 townhome units, rental, market rental units, with completion of 2026 for Phase 2, and a completion of 2027 for Phase 3. So that's the basis of our Second Amendment. Importantly, as Bob, excuse me, Mr. Vitas, mentioned, the incentive. So, there is a business district tax that has been in place, and this is not addressing, this amendment does not address that. The incentives that are in place, it does address property tax rebate and sales tax rebate. So, there are identified max incentives for each phase. We are not changing those proposed phase-based incentives or the total... We are not changing those proposed phase-based incentives or the total phase-based combined max incentive across all phases, so it doesn't contemplate changing those. But it does contemplate changing the ratios and how sales tax and property tax are handled. So in the current, we're out of the First Amendment right now, and that details 100% sales tax of the, just the Moline, 1% sales tax to go to the developer. So we're changing that ratio, 85% to developer, 15% to city. Also, that sales tax rebate did not have an end date. It existed until the combined max incentive was met. So we have brought that forward to 2041, so we have a dependable term of state for sales tax rebate, so it can't go on in perpetuity. Property tax rebate, the original, the original structure had a tiered approach over six-year periods, 100%, 75%, 50% for every six-year period in descending order. With the ratio, we have flattened that and synthesized it to be the same, 85-15 split. Again, so that takes away those years where we're not receiving, so it makes it, allows us to participate in those first years as well. And that did have, with the First Amendment in 2018, it had a 2041 end date, so that is staying in place as well. So therefore, we have the ratios for both rebates at 85-15 split with 2041 end dates for both, so that's synthesized. And one of the key factors for us, and we've had the conversation with great detail, and both parties agree, housing being paramount in Phase Three being completed has been such a determining part of the conversation. These housing units at 27th and Avenue of Cities is important. If Phase Two, for Phase Three, if that is not, if it's not completed by December 31st of 2027, all incentives for all phases would be canceled at that point. So that is, that is a step, it's a strong step for us to ensure that delivery is met, that highly incentivizes Dolan Commons to deliver.
So I can go on for two more hours, but I'm going to stop.
I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
With regards to the motion, it's so that you can do this in one motion rather than having to do an amendment. If the movement in the second will move this with the items that are at your seats rather than the materials that were included in the packet. If you make that part of the original motion, you can do it in one vote. Otherwise, you'll have to do a motion to amend.
Okay, so if you're going to make this motion to put this on the floor, please say with the materials that we've been provided this evening. I have a motion.
With the materials we've provided this evening. I, motion to approve.
Thank you. All right, so that's motion by Castro, seconded by Finch. Discussion? I will say thank you so much for looking out for everyone's best interest. Thank you for committing to the housing. Very, really, very important. Excited to see that corner come alive some more. Were there other comments from the council? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. And that, does that conclude our guest speakers for these items? I think the rest are all in-house.
I believe so.
Okay, I will need to take a quick break and turn the meeting over to probably, because Mr. Timian is technically mayor pro temp, but you're, I, do I just need to go down the line?
You think a brief recess?
I just need to take a brief recess.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding.
I need to take a brief recess.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And I'm just trying to decide if we could do it right now rather than waiting till it's change of meaning, because we don't have, being respectful of people's time, we don't have, can we take a three-minute, can I get a motion for a three-minute recess?
I motion that we take a three-minute recess.
Second. All right, Mr. Castro, seconded by Finch, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, see you at 7:17. Thank you. Okay, are we ready? Do we have all of our calls?
7:9.
Do I need a motion? How do I come back from recess?
In order to reconvene from a recess, you simply have to call the body back to order.
Okay, call it back. Thank you. All right, I'll call our meeting back to order at 7:18. We are at Item 7.9, an ordinance amending Chapter Four, alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances to prohibit Class C, package sales only, liquor licenses from simultaneously holding Class B tavern liquor licenses. Mr. Atkins.
And Your Honor, with regards to this particular ordinance amendment, we have had some experience in this city with individuals having a Class B and a Class C license. We, in fact, have had particularly experience with them where they were apparently using it solely to be able to have gambling devices, which were perfectly legal under that setup, but then they were not bringing in their revenue in an appropriate fashion based on the B and C licenses. In fact, one particular entity ended up losing its liquor license because of not satisfying those requirements. Currently, we do not have anyone in Moline that has both a B and a C license. However, there could always, this problem could always develop again, and rather than dealing with the problem after it arises, this is a proactive solution to make sure that we don't have this problem anymore.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Is there discussion?
When reading through the code, anyone who has a Class B license that wanted to also sell packaged liquor would be eligible to. Like, that privilege is allowed to someone with a Class B license as well, by only having a Class B. They don't need a second license.
Yes. Well, if, if they satisfy all the requirements of the Class B license, they would be able to, there is some small amount of packaged liquors that can be sold as part of a Class B license until that particular part of the state law sunsets in '28, I think it is. And they would be allowed to have gambling devices, potentially. It would be a possibility for them, not a guarantee. But they would not be able to have the Class C license that allowed all packaged liquors to be sold. So there would still be a significant limitation, and once the, the particular packaged liquor under Class B, once that sunsets in whatever year it was, I wish I could remember that, I apologize, they would not be able to sell packaged liquor at all at that point. So there is that small amount, certain packaged liquors that are available, cocktails, as I recall, are one of them, that currently is available, but that's in a sunset provision, not a standard portion of a Class B license.
If I can highlight too, this is essentially helping us align practice or enforcement of not allowing a mini gaming salon, right, which we've already decided to sunset, but in 2027. Yes, Mr. Schmidt.
And I'm supportive of what we're doing and how we're looking to enforce that and prevent the gaming. I'm all there, I'm just making sure I'm wrapping my head around it. And I just thought of this question. Would someone be eligible to have a Class A license in addition to another, or is that prohibited in the Class A license already? I didn't read that today when I was actually in the code.
Can I speak to that? Can I speak to that experience?
There could be, there could be a Class A and Class C license, could be a combination. In fact, I believe we have individuals who do have.
And that case, that particular case rectified their situations when they were out of compliance. They have rectified it, and we have watched that every year. The other case you were referencing was watched for multiple years, was worked with to provide a pathway to becoming compliant and did not happen. So.
This particular ordinance is based on experience that we have had, and I, it is not, it's my understanding there have not been the kind of problems with A and C that there were with B and C. And so we have a strong justification for passing this change because of what we've experienced and have even documented hearings over this issue. Whereas for the A and C, it, it doesn't seem to be a problem with A and C like it was with B and C.
That makes sense based on the requirements of that license, yeah.
Anything further from the council? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion passes. 7.10, resolution approving an appeal application from the City of Moline that is in reference to the requirements of Chapter 35, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, Section 35-3909 F3A and D, to allow replacement of 35% or more of facade materials on the street facade with a different siding material not in conformance with siding materials specified in Table 3906-1 in order to renovate an existing office building at 1836th Avenue Moline.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the city, as you know, is in the process of renovating the City Services Center located at 1836th Avenue. As part of the Form Based Code, whenever you remove more than 35% of the front facade, you're required to have the front primary facade meet the Form Based Code in its entirety. What that would mean for this project is that to come into full compliance would mean that 65% of that primary facade has to be stone, brick, or terracotta. And fiber cement is really what we've chosen to do for this project. So you had an old wood siding on there, the city has chosen to, and really, Denver will get into the specifics of the project, but fiber cement has been chosen as really a material that meets that quality standard, but also something that's durable, that's going to last for a long time, because maintenance is also something that we have to consider for this building. So the city submitted a design adjustment to the Form Based Code to use this material. That went to the Plan Commission on May 28th, where it was tabled. At that point, the city went back to try and look at other ways we could do this project, but frankly, there wasn't another material that worked in the, for our, for our staff. And like I said, Denver can talk about that portion of it. But even when you look at that existing brick, there was not a way to match that brick, not just in the color scheme, but also in just how far, what the depth is from the building. So they, ultimately, the city came back to the Plan Commission with the same application on July 9th. At that meeting, it was rejected by the Plan Commission in a very close vote for four nays to three ayes. So a design adjustment, I guess, a couple of things I want to say about just how we should evaluate these requests. A design adjustment is not the same level of threshold as a variance is, but it does provide the intent standards for us. So if you look at our staff report that we've attached here with this item, you can see all those criteria that we use to say, does this meet the intent of the Form Based Code? In staff's opinion, this does meet that. You can see in the staff report, or I can go through all those for you if you'd like me to. I will say, because of that, it should be approved, in my opinion. That was the recommendation I shared with the Plan Commission, and it's the same reason I'm sharing with you now that I think the appeal should be approved. But I will add to that, that, you know, I feel strongly that the city can't meet this code and meet the budget for the project. I do feel that this is something that should be amended. We are going to, we already have, as staff, have been thinking about how we can amend the Form Based Code for existing buildings. And I think one thing we've been thinking about is just to rewrap that back to our original zoning code. We have design standards in our code. And to say, look, I mean, this is something that would have been approved just in the normal zoning code, because it's a material that we would be happy to get on in Old Town, Uptown, other places, so. I'm going to let Denver talk about some of the specifics of the project.
It's over there in the chair.
Thank you all for the opportunity to talk a bit about this project. So City Services Center, we originally started discussing this last fall with Mr. Vitas. Originally, scope, we decided just to have painting, flooring, signage, some minor office improvements, and furniture as well. So our original budget for the project was roughly $600,000. We decided to go with our facilities division staff for this project, looking at the budget and projected costs, possibly contracting out the project. I would say $600,000 would be at the low end, possibly up to $2 million. So I'm thankful we went through this, this route with our staff. They've really done an amazing, amazing job to this point. Very envious of their skills and abilities on how they've completed the projects within the building. We're very close to the end, but there are a few issues along the way. So we have had challenges, of course, with any public works project, there's challenges. First, we decided that the old Bethany Building was not really suitable for what we needed operationally for Q and development staff and Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec staff. So at that point, we decided that we needed to build out some more office space and more walls. At that point, when we started to open things up, we saw a lot of things pour within, inside the building. So we replaced, staff-wise, we replaced windows, and we also, as Chris mentioned, ran into some exterior siding issues as well. As you've seen, the siding was originally not installed correctly, so there was extensive long-term water moisture issues underneath that siding, which is causing the replacement need for that. So we do, obviously, with these challenges, we have budget impacts as well. With these items added to that scope, again, we were estimating the price to triple, at least to $2.5 to $3 million. Again, luckily, we are on staff for labor, but even with those hard, we're staying on track within that budget. So just to give an idea, the picture on the left was the wood siding that was on Bethany Building when we acquired it. The hardy board, or, and the cement siding is what we're recommending, is very similar in appearance. We would try to get a custom color to match what existing was, was obviously. As Chris mentioned, it's a little bit longer lasting than the last 30 to 50 years. There will be upkeep on it, but, and then also, it's more cost-effective than going to break. So we had some renderings completed. Again, what we're trying to achieve is uniformity with the materials on the outside of the building. Currently, there is brick on the western portion of the building, and you'll see what our vehicles are on the bottom photo. It's more like a concrete block. There's two different types of those concrete blocks. The one towards the bottom, it's actually more of a rougher, and the upper portion is more of a flat concrete block. So again, with the hardy board option, we're looking to have more uniformity and more of a professional look at the building. So like Chris mentioned, we did take it to the Plan Commission. It was denied at that point. After the first Plan Commission, we did go get some brick and stone, just to have an idea of budget, potential cost for the project. This rendering shows what brick might look like. Again, as Chris mentioned, the brick coloring would not exactly match, so again, I'll still, Mr. Vitas is aligned, it's kind of going to be a patchwork quilt look on the building. It's not going to be uniformally at all. There's potentially five different types of materials that can be on the exterior. So again, professional look, we're looking at the hardy board. So currently, budget considerations, we are, again, currently under budget. We do have some expenses that we've not paid or have been invoiced on. We still have some unknown costs, electrical work, plumbing work, glass work, and also ADA compliance that we need for the outside. I would estimate those costs roughly $25,000 to $50,000 in addition to those other non-paid costs. So balance-wise, we're still doing okay, but obviously, depending on the material used on the outside, it's going to impact that, the balance. So as part of the packet, we did include five different scenarios for cost. The first one that we recommend would definitely keep us in balance with that budget, it would be the hardy board on the north or the street-facing side, as long, along with the east side. If it were denied, we could do the brick on the north and the hardy on the east side, which would be a cost savings, but again, for uniformity on the exterior, we would not recommend that. We could also do the stone, which would be a little bit more expensive, but again, we would not recommend that on the north and not have it on the east as well, just for uniformity's sake as well. If we went with all brick, all brick option, we would be over budget. Again, $70,000 balance, but we do have those unknown costs as well, so I would probably increase that by, and it would be an option as well that we could go with, but that would substantially be over our budget for the project. So in sum, we are recommending the hardy board for the north and east portions of the building with, again, our... With, again, our, our thinking is it's for the appearance. It's, it's similar to what it looked like previously, and again, uniform. The ability wise, it's, we feel as staff, it's the best option.
Thank you very much. You need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Finch, second by?
Razak.
Razak, thank you. Discussion and questions? Ms. Castro and Mr. Schmidt?
Two questions. If this was not a City of the Moline project, would you be recommending approval for it?
Yeah, in my opinion, this meets the criteria, but like I said, what, for me, it's the fact that the city can't do it. You know, I wouldn't, I don't think we should be asking the private sector to do it. And so that'd be my reason to, to ask that we amend the code and we're going to ask the Plan Commission to do that, and then hopefully it gets, gets here.
That would be my second, my follow-up question is if that was going to be coming to be amendment to the code. That's all.
That would be our plan.
Thank you. I did. Okay, go ahead.
That's okay. I can wait.
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Just one, one quick comment. I mean, when we started the Form Based Code project, three months, over three years ago now, and we got done with it, I mean, the, the main intent of that code was really to establish a Form Based Code to govern new construction in the downtown. Because we knew that we had forty-eight acres worth of parking available, some of which will be forgiven and turned into housing. And we knew that the riverfront redevelopment needed some guiding principles beyond just our regular zoning code. And that's how it grew. It came out of that project, the I seventy-four redevelopment corridor. So as we look at the downtown as a whole, you ought to realize it's a historic downtown, right? There's a few key landmark buildings, but it is a historic downtown. So if you look down the street, this is a really great example that I shared with Chris. We look down the street, we've got this multimillion dollar Seventh Avenue reconstruction going on with this magnificent roundabout that's going to be just down the street from us. And there's the old church. The old church had to remove one hundred percent of all of the facade material in order to repair the structural integrity of the building. So now, they would be in a position to go forward when this project is over, and that is the plan after a lot of legal issues, and to redevelop the facades on that building. But they would be limited. They would be limited to just simply the materials that would make it cost prohibitive, which then draws into question, would they do it? And what would happen to the building? So when you start to impose a code and regulation, you're imposing costs. Whether they're cost to the city or not is really, almost irrelevant. In our case, it's a patchwork quilt. It's already a building that has multiple building materials on it. And we were very careful to try and keep that building's integrity and appearance similar to the way it's been. It's going to look a little different, color scheme will be a little different, but at the end of the day, it's a maintenance-free building almost for fifty years, other than the minor upkeep that has to be done. Stone, same thing, you've got to tuck point in brick, you have to tuck point in, so you're always going to have exterior maintenance. Question ultimately is, is did we want to go beyond what was planned, which was really intended to be new construction? And now start to impose that up and down Sixth and Seventh and Fifth River Drive? It's endless. And that's why we're going to recommend bringing back an amendment and adding this material as an option so that it gives some of these other property owners the ability to contain the costs on projects and invest in our downtown as opposed to walk away hands off and say, I'm not doing it, it's just too expensive. And leaving us with an empty building or an unfinished product. So, that's my thoughts.
Mr. Schmidt and Mr. McNeil.
As we're considering all buildings in similar situations, is, what is, what would be the recommended approach we take to this? I mean, expectation that, that the, the building would either maintain the same visual look or advance into something like the Form Based Code? I mean, I understand the argument and I appreciate, and the only way I was going to vote for this was when you said you were going to propose an amendment, because otherwise, there was no way I was voting for it.
Right.
And like, I, I like that, and that we're saying, okay, we found this problem, if we can't do it later, great. I'm just wondering, what's the, what's the test we apply? Right, to say it has to be this to get that design?
So while we haven't set down all the parameters yet, generally, what I'm thinking is an existing building that's in the Form Based Code, we will, since we already have standards in the zone, in the zoning code, we can simply refer to that and say, look, choose from this. These materials are allowed, you can choose from these materials, and you have to vaguely make your building kind of interesting in these ways, right? You can recess it, you can bring it forward, you can add some windows, things like that. So it's, you know, it's not anywhere near the Form Based Code in terms of requirements, but it's, it's a, it's a limited set of requirements. So that's, that's our thinking, is that we would route existing buildings downtown that way. And the new buildings, like what Jim Thompson's doing, like what's going on, you know, technically, I guess the dispatch would not be a new building if you're looking at it that way. But in terms of what Jim Thompson's doing, that's a completely new building and we'll meet the Form Based Code. And I don't think we'd want to change that.
As long as we, I, I totally understand why you would ask about what's going to come forward, but I think Mr. Atkins would say we have to keep our questions and comments about this particular item. And they will be coming back to us with updates to.
If, if you're asking about what standards you should use for deciding this particular appeal, I can go over that with you. The, the code actually provides that if you're meeting the intent of the Form Based Codes, you don't have to meet the specific wording of the Form Based Codes. And so the intent, actually, there are, these are included in the materials in your packet, but I'll go ahead and read through these provisions. If you satisfy, and, and these are, some of these are alternative to each other, you don't necessarily have to satisfy every single one of these. Sense of place, you enhance the sense of place specific to Moline Center by connecting to the riverfront, ensuring buildings are properly oriented towards the river and downtown, expanding and reinforcing the unique vibrant urban character of the historic mixed-use downtown core, ensuring new development consists of a variety of high-quality buildings.
And it'd just be one of those, three?
Walkable, bikeable urban development, create walkable and bikeable development that is comfortable, safe, and interesting for the pedestrian and bicycles throughout the downtown, connecting to the riverfront. Places for people to live downtown, support a variety of housing types throughout the downtown, along the riverfront and on the edges as transitions to neighborhoods. And one more, adaptable, sustainable, ensure Moline Center continues to be successful into the future through development that promotes environmental sustainability goals such as reductions in vehicle miles traveled and through pedestrian and bicycle-friendly design, flexible categories of uses, including small-scale manufacturing and production facilities in the form of maker and artisan spaces that, that within a mixed-use downtown. These were all addressed in the application, and to make it very simple in, in why it is that this should be granted, and these are essentially the arguments that were made to the Plan Commission and ultimately failed by a, a single vote. The, the existing building, it is a better adaptable and sustainable use to retrofit an existing building than to demolish and build a brand-new building. And so the adaptable and sustainable aspect is met through that. With regards to the accessibility, the, the biking and pedestrian travel, et cetera, this particular location, especially with the, the park right next to it, actually provides a very good landscape for biking and pedestrian travel through that area. The, the way that it appears in terms of, of the sense of place being enhanced by utilizing these materials, it will actually look significantly like it did prior to the, the work being done. Whereas with some of the other materials that might actually end up being put on there, for instance, if you were to try to match brick from decades back, quite likely, you're going to have a mismatched-looking building. It won't even match itself. So with regards to the sense of place, the usability of this location, and fitting the goals for the Form Based Codes, this absolutely does all of that. And with regards to your decision, it's basically just deciding, is this a good use of the space? These are what one of my law school professors, these standards are what one of my law school professors used to refer to as GUI. Basically, you can mold them and shape them the way that you want to. And within your discretion, if this seems to be a good use of the space that will draw people to the area and it will not make people leave that area, then it's a good use. That's really what it comes down to. And so I think that you clearly are, are meeting the criteria with what's been proposed.
Did you have any further clarity needed?
No, your point I'm wanting off topic was correct.
Was there another hand from the council?
Yes, but thank you, Mr. Atkins clarified my question.
That was.
Answered, that was answered, thank you.
So if there's nothing further from the council, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Seven point eleven, a resolution authorizing the chief of police on behalf of the city of Moline to execute a Rock Island County e-citation intergovernmental agreement by and between the Rock Island County Circuit Clerk and the respective law enforcement jurisdictions of the Rock Island County Sheriff, cities of Moline, East Moline, Silvis, Rock Island, and villages of Coal Valley and Mylan for the implementation and use of an electronic citation system.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council. Back in two thousand nineteen, when I started here at the Moline Police Department, we explored e-citation, trying to move the agency into modern times by using technology. Hopefully, none of you have been stopped by our wonderful staff from the Moline Police Department, but they are writing citations by hand. We have a very large bill every year to purchase state-approved tickets on a ticket book. And then, of course, the state changes them, so then we throw away a thousand ticket books and buy new ones. It's a very inefficient system that I wanted to update. Problem is, e-citation is a very expensive endeavor. In two thousand twenty, as you all probably have purchased it from your memory, but during COVID, the court system shut down completely. The one interesting thing of those times is that you saw that the use of technology really exploded and kind of jump-started particularly government into understanding that they could do things like court processes or, or other things a little bit more efficiently, and take advantage of technology. So in two thousand twenty-three, the Circuit Clerk of Rock Island County had, had asked the police departments in the area to move towards e-citation. Currently, in, in a traffic citation, a small portion of the traffic ticket, if a fine is assessed, and that's a whole nother conversation, goes back to the municipalities. The problem is, it's just not enough to fund e-citation. So for perspective, over the history of the e-citation fund, I think I have less than twenty thousand dollars in that, that fund. We get about a hundred dollars a month. So we pushed back on that and said, we just, we just can't afford it to move to e-citation. So the clerk, myself, and the Rock Island County Sheriff, Darren Hart, have been working together for, since two thousand twenty-three on this. And the Rock Island County Clerk subsequently applied for grants through the only court system and a couple other, the Circuit Clerk, the State Clerk's Office. And she was eventually awarded a two thousand twenty-five grant totaling over three hundred thousand dollars to implement a Rock Island County-wide e-citation program. The problem still remained, she was able to procure a vendor that was compatible with the state court system, but that vendor was not compatible with our Rock Island County records management system. So what we found is the record, the technology is great until you buy someone else's product. And when you want to connect somebody else's product to another product, there's some sort of a interface that is needed, and of course, a cost that comes with that. So the interface was fifty thousand dollars annually in reoccurring software charges. The good thing is that a lot of projects were coming together. In my role on the ETSB Board, which governs the nine-one-one system here, we put together some heads together, and my business analyst, Summer O'Leary, did some research, and we ended up convincing ETSB to buy a universal API interface that would allow us to connect other vendors to our interface. So I'm bringing you a long ways around to tell you that this project in front of you costs you nothing, that it is completely paid for by the Rock Island County Clerk and the Rock Island County Electronic Telephone System Board. The city incurs no initial costs. There is, I guess, there is some minor costs that we're going to absorb in-house, such as some installation that Public Works in the, in the Fleet Department, they will, they will plug in the, the cords and run them and, and things like that, but it's very minimal. I've already run that by Sarah Mark at Fleet, and I think there is one little bracket that we have to buy, but it's very minimal. And then, and you see in the, in the agreement, this was actually, they didn't, there was no agreement. I pushed them to put this in writing because, as you know, elected officials' terms end. And my, my concern was that there would be other people, new sheriff, new clerk, that didn't know what was going on here. We wanted to memorialize this. So we got an agreement together to outline these, these responsibilities, and as you can see, it commits the clerk and the ETSB to those financial contributions, and then outlays that the future costs for replacements, like the printers that will hang over the headrest of each squad car are, are on us. But she's already actually purchased the printers, and so we'll get an initial outlay of all the equipment costs. So there is another option, too, that we can move to ordinance citations through e-citation. That would be on the municipality. I haven't explored that yet, I just want to get this up and running. Get, we'll, we'll get the tip of the spear and going, and then we'll see how it goes. But, so with that, long-winded, and service staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve, second. Did you complete your?
Motion to approve.
Second, thank you. Motion by Schmidt, seconded by Finch. Discussion? Thanks for finding cost-effective ways to do business better. There's nothing further, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Seven point twelve, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a test to a school city partnership agreement on public safety drone infrastructure between the city of Moline and the Moline Coal Valley School District number forty to install and operate a public safety drone and docking station at Moline High School.
So I just want to take a, a quick moment to highlight the challenges of intergovernmental agreements. If you, and I know you see the final product that all these staff members bring up, that go through legal and, and all, everything like that. I just want you to know, this is like three-dimensional chess to get these things accomplished. You know, before you hear is an MOU with the school district, I'm, this is like a timing leapfrog here. So you're the first to see this officially. I have it on the agenda here tonight to explain to you, it will go to the Board of Education on Monday. They are aware of it, but they have not seen it, their meeting is Monday. And then it'll come, once they approve it, then the final thing will come back to you, City Council on August fifth, so that we have all the pieces in order, and then everybody can sign off on it, and then we can stay on everybody's deadlines, timetables, meeting schedules, and of course, our project timeline. So our, our drone program that we brought forward to you a few months ago, and then you approved, was Skydio drones, to mount drones on the roof to respond to certain emergencies, is on track. We got council approval, we signed the contracts, Skydio came to testing, they did test flights, all sorts of design engineering. And then the question was, okay, where is the second dock going to go? So as we're going through this, we're obtaining FAA approval. Now we're working on the ceiling heights around the airport and FAA approval and the airport approval for that. And we're trying to stay on track to go live in September. So the second dock, the first dock is going to be on the roof of the Moline Police Department. The second dock, when we presented this to you, we, we didn't have publicly disclose where the second dock would be because we want, we're targeting a couple of areas. One of them was the school district, and one of them was the library. As you know, there's not really a lot of government buildings on the avenue of the cities. We really wanted something on top of the bluff that would service central and southern part of the city. Because if you remember in the demonstration or the, the videos, that drone has a limited battery lifespan, and it can only go about three miles out, and then it needs to go back and recharge. So we want them to. So we want them to be spread out strategically so we can get full coverage of the entire city, a little bit of our neighboring partners as well, and then manage the ceiling heights of the FAA. So the advantage that the school district has, we already have an existing partnership with them with school cameras. As you know, we have obtained a DOJ grant several years ago. We have cameras at all the crosswalks. And some of those cameras shoot the video back to a receiver at the schools, drops into their internet infrastructure, and then comes back on Genesee Communications to the police department. So we knew that that was already a workable solution. We need power and internet and then a place for the, for the drone. The other advantage to the school district is they have a generator, or the high school has a generator. And so it's an ideal location for us, location-wise and the resources there. The school district's been a phenomenal partner. This, the, as you know, I've brought several things before to you before. I think one of the best in the state, the partnerships with the police department and the school district, and they, they've been eager to support us. I am aware that the superintendent has briefed the president of the board and, and they're mediable to it, so we don't see any problems, but I'll present it to them on Monday. So staff would recommend approval of the MOU that's in front of you. That MOU kind of highlights the responsibilities. The dock is very small, it's probably a little bigger than this podium. A Y is not that tall, weighs about two hundred pounds, will be secured to their roof structure. They're going to give us access, they're going to allow us to get up there to maintain it, and they're going to give us access to their internet infrastructure. But that data will go basically through and back to us. The school district will not have visibility to any data or any responsibility to maintain it, so all those things are outlined in the agreement in front of you today.
Thank you. Motion to approve, second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Seven thirteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an FTTP development agreement with Comcast of Illinois, Indiana, Ohio LLC to provide fiber network services to commercial customers in the city of Moline. Mr. Vitas.
Sure, thank you, Mayor and Council. We are recommending approval of the FTTP development agreement with Comcast of Illinois, Indiana, Ohio. They approached the city several months ago about bringing their services to the Quad Cities, and they were working not only with us but with our sister city across the river, Baton Rouge. And they, they had a location on Illinois ninety-two that they wanted to acquire and to construct their facility for distribution of their services to commercial customers. It is not based upon servicing residential at this time. So they've been long looking at the Quad Cities as a, as a market that they would like to enter, and they finally made that decision to do that. The agreement before you is similar in content with the exception of providing all the requirements we had for MetroNet, which, as you know, provides fiber internet services one hundred percent throughout the city, both commercial as well as residential customers. So this agreement is modeled after that one, and we are recommending approval so that Comcast can move forward with their project.
Motion to approve, second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion, motion passes. Seven fourteen, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-five, planning and development of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-five dash twenty-one hundred. Official comprehensive plan adopted, territorial application by amending, the official comprehensive plan as follows. By adopting and adding new text at appendices adopted, page one, and by adopting and adding to the appendices adopted, a new appendix R entitled Moline Riverfront and Center Plan. Mr. Vitas.
I can start this out by at long last and then just holding up the final product. Right, here it is. This is what we started four years ago, five years ago, even before that, as this city was looking at the future relocation of the I seventy-four bridge. Obviously, a lot of council members, a lot of staff members, consultants have come and gone, and some, most of us are all still here. But we brought this to conclusion. We now have, with MKS's assistance and numerous other players who knew Moline, stakeholders throughout the community, citizens throughout the community that we engaged throughout this process, we have a final product. We have a final product that's going to guide the future redevelopment, once it is adopted and then incorporated into our comprehensive plan. And as the update of the comprehensive plan happens, this document, of course, will be included in that as well. So we're recommending approval of the plan as submitted and as was presented to the council when Brett was here. When was it, about a month ago? Roughly about a month ago. It's not often that you get to see such a master plan in any community, especially one of this magnitude. So this will be the, the guiding document that will steer what this administration will do in future years to attract the development there, to see the development take place and to watch, of course, you know, the city's treasury grow. It's going to shrink a little while we spend money to make money, but it will cause significant development on the riverfront. And I would say that there is, this is probably one of the most exciting projects that's being approved anywhere on the Mississippi today, from north to south. I don't know of anybody else who has such a project happening. So we're highly recommending approval and going forward with, with the plan.
Motion to approve, second. Motion by Finch, seconded by Castro. Discussion? Everyone's fed up here with information on the riverfront.
No discussion, I have good smile for this.
Yeah. Mr. Smiths?
Thank you, and yes, at last, share that. And obviously, you know, with, as we start looking at cost and everything, things, it'll still be nimble, right? There might be some, this is basically recommendations. We're, we're not beholden to everything that they put on here, correct?
I could not hear from this machine.
Correct. It's still flexible.
It's flexible.
It's, it's recommendations, it's not requirements.
It is a, it is a master plan. So as, as, as we go forward with the next step in the process, and I'll add this, is that MKSK will be providing the marketing piece for this plan, or we call it the pitch, pitch plan. They will also be providing an implementation plan, which will kind of lay out timelines. It'll lay out the strategies that we'll use to implement the plan, but it in no way, shape, or form controls, you know, each individual parcel. We, we know that our preferred alternatives are identified in the master plan. It doesn't mean that if somebody comes to us with something that we really like and would like to see, that we don't have the inability to make that happen. So we have flexibility always.
This is what attracts all those ideas and investors and developers.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Informationals, two thousand twenty-four to twenty-six, strategic plan dashboard, fiscal year twenty-five, quarter two. Mr. Vitas.
Okay, well, they're back-to-back, so let's just jump in real quick. I'll do a quick, just a quick synopsis for you on where we're at with the current strategic plan at the end of this quarter. Completion is sitting at forty percent of all of the forty-seven goals. Forty-four, almost forty-five percent are on track, work, moving forward toward completion. There's only four percent that are running a little bit behind schedule, and then there's ten point six percent that have not been started. It says on hold. Some of those actually are moving, and one of those in particular would be the comprehensive plan. We have gone out for bid for that, and there were fourteen, if I'm not mistaken, for us, fourteen different vendors submitted interest in providing comprehensive planning services to the city, which is really exciting. I mean, that's, that's a lot of firms. I was shocked by that. But as a part of that, the multimodal transportation plan, of course, is a part of that, no differently than this river, riverfront center plan. So that is in there. The one thing that definitely is on hold right now, and it really is, is waiting for the comprehensive plan to be completed, is the comprehensive rezoning. And remember, it's a comprehensive rezoning as opposed to just rezoning. So this is an overall rezoning that would take place on the heels of a comprehensive plan being done, and that is the industry standard. That is really how it is done. So it doesn't prevent you, though, from making zoning adjustments over the course of time, as long as they're not, like, way out there, right? The municipal code update, of course, we pretty much put that on hold. I mean, it became a very costly exercise, our codes. We've been updating them regularly as, as needed to be. So, so that is sitting actually on hold and probably will not be something that will be included in the, in the new comprehensive plan. And then developing a policy and program for food security. We went down that road. We had numerous discussions with numerous vendors, and we just could not find a partner that would be willing to engage us to do something in that regard. It's not to say that we won't continue to look, but right now, we don't have any vendors interested. With that, the, the riverfront rebranding, obviously, was running behind, but now we're approved it, and the I seventy-four redevelopment master plan is basically done. So numbers-wise, we're doing great, we're staying on track and within budget, most importantly.
Thank you. Comments from the council? I'll say that a couple of things that stuck out to me, especially things that don't cost a lot. Under our increasing social infrastructure, the memory cafe that's being explored, the connecting-in-real-life event happening in August, and the neighborhood identification plan. I noted that it was observed that it's difficult for some parts of Moline to feel like neighborhoods, and I think the more we do to connect one another to something bigger than our individual homes, that does a lot for building up community and making us stronger. So I appreciated seeing all that. I was curious, and especially since Denver's here, how did the kickoff meeting for the climate action plan go? Were you at that?
Yes, we had a follow-up meeting to talk about some initiatives, but I think we, we're going to meet every other meeting.
Okay. Great, thank you. So we moved then, if there's something further from the council, to eight point two, the two thousand twenty-six to twenty-nine strategic goals and objectives. Mr. Vitas.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. The July twenty-second draft is just that. It is a draft. It is the culmination of the roundtable discussion that the, the council had together with the staff a month ago. And where the council had the opportunity to share with us what they thought, you know, the new goals and the new objectives would be going forward, recognizing that there will be carryover goals and objectives as well, right? If they're not done and they're still valid, they will carry over. So based on that workshop that was held with the council, we then held a, almost an all-day affair with all of the department directors at the Moline Library, where they had the opportunity to review the goals that the council had pretty, had laid out and some of the objectives, and then to further take and refine those goals and objectives and, and present them to you. So what you have is the culmination of a, a joint effort, really, between the mayor and the city council, as well as all of your department directors, to produce the new pillars as well as the new goals, and consider a change to the mission statement that was suggested by Alder, Alder Person Masias. So you can go through and see infrastructure, housing, economy, and quality of place as our four pillars that support everything that we do. And then you can see underneath each of those, in the case of infrastructure, maintaining, preserving all structural assets. As you know, that's really an issue. We run into it all the time. So we have refined it to read maintaining and preserve all structural assets of the city. Do you want me to go through all of these?
No, they, they read them. I think you should get some feedback from us.
So, so that being said, thank you very much for that input, shortening my presentation. We're available, if not tonight, at any time for you to reach out between now and the end of the month. And I say the end of the month sincerely because once we have a clear path forward, we're going to move forward with starting to develop the action plan at the same time. Because by the time you adopt your budget in November on the eighteenth, keep that date in mind, November the eighteenth, we want to adopt the budget at that meeting. We will adopt the strategic plan, and I would like to have the action plan done at that time so that we can then plan ahead for the start of the fiscal year and hit the ground running in Jan, in January, rather than develop the action plan once you've adopted the strategic plan. So it's going to be give and take, back and forth, sharing, you know, information with you as we go so that you can see what those products look like. But if you have any changes, any suggestions, if you think we missed the mark anywhere, let me know, either tonight or whenever.
Oh, yes, Mr. McMahon?
I just have a comment. I, I know this is, we're in draft form, but like, I always struggle in strategies and using the verb explore. What I look at, two examples would be like explore homeownership opportunities or explore temporary housing solutions. It just seems challenging to come to measurable outcomes, right? You can, I mean, I could do some exploring tonight, right? And not, and it, so it's just something I would ask moving forward to maybe, like, refine those or consider those and how we can come up with something maybe more measurable there.
That is a great point. Every goal should have a measurable objective.
And I think explore and encourage would be another one that I look at and kind of wonder how we measure our impact with some of those.
Thank you. I have a couple for you.
Okay.
Some of these could all be subsumed under Prepare Facility Management Plan. I mean, they are specific locations, specific places, but it's all part of the larger facility management plan I was asking about last week. Secondly, I, I love that we're acknowledging stabilize and grow the population. It's like something that's been, like, it's running behind us in conversations about budget or development or whatever, but to acknowledge it very clearly is very helpful. I'm curious, how is a community and service navigator different from our community development folks that, project managers that we have now? You don't have to answer right now, but that was a question that came to mind. I was concerned under the economy pillar. I know it says advanced large site readiness and availability for major employers. I don't see workforce readiness anywhere in this whole strategic plan. And from my experiences with MICD and development, it's like chicken and an egg, but they, they will not come and build housing if you don't have a workforce. And, and Chris and I could go back and forth on that. I think you've got to address workforce somewhere in here, whether it's working more with the educational institutions to do that, or with the state, or whatever it is, somewhere it should be there. Also, I think you should get clear about whether you're calling it environmental resiliency strategy or climate action plan. They're, you have.
The prior.
Yeah. So in the dashboard that we just went through, it talks about a climate action plan.
Right.
We need to fix the language if you're really talking about resiliency. But I do appreciate that resiliency comes back. Also, it should be here in the number three in the mission, rather than using environmentally sustainable, keep going, keep being consistent with the word resilient, if that makes sense. So those are my biggest takeaways from my first look at it.
I'll collect those from you.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Anybody else at this moment? Mr. Schmidt?
Yeah. I think overall, it captured many of the ideas, bringing things together. I like that direction it's going. I do really appreciate the maintain and preserve all structural assets. That obviously is a huge pressure point and area of focus that's needed. I too, I too worry that we get a little too specific in this list, like, we started getting into that nitty-gritty list, which doesn't quite belong there, but that can get cleaned up. Like driving into like, putting down every fire station we're going to fix, but not every other built, like, it's just a, how cuts across. Not that I don't want to fix the fire stations.
Oh, they're listed.
So, um, one that I do have a problem with is evaluate creation of a regional water authority. I suppose this is one place where if it was going to make it through without me finding it, it would have to use that wishy-washy evaluate word.
Explore.
Explore, right? Because sometimes that is what we need to do. Because sometimes that is what we need to do, right? We have to ask ourselves a ton of questions, and that's perhaps okay. I am not interested in any way, shape, or form of handing over control of our water system outside of the city of Moline. And my concern always has been and will be that if we move to a regional water authority model, we have to allow seats to those who we bring into said authority. Now, that theoretically brings in investment, but if we are ever outgrown in that, right? If we bring in East Moline and Silvis and Coal Valley and Orion and all kinds of places, we may become the minority voter in our regional water authority, and those communities may not be as committed to high-quality water as we are. And our experiences with the LRS debacle and laissez-faire means you can't have it certainly have inspired a distrust of turning over some of the weeds. I mean, cooperation is key and important, but I don't think everyone else is willing to put the same level of investment in that we are, and I don't want to lower our willingness. So, that's my soapbox.
That's a very good point. I would also ask you to filter or compare that example with that of having a regional civic center authority.
Or to come, or metro link, or airport.
Correct.
I mean, the list is endless of where there are intergovernmental relationships.
Right, and we've experienced plenty.
Good and bad.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Point well taken.
If there's nothing else, I'll call, oh, sorry, Mr. Schmidt.
So, I know, I really went off on that one. One piece that I do feel like is addressed, but not head-on in here, is anything with homelessness. I think Alder Person Murphy, in particular, would appreciate me bringing that up. It's, we, there are a lot of pieces here that are definitely working into that problem, both in housing as well as in quality of place. I think they both have areas of touch on it. But I do wonder, like, we never used the word homelessness, even when we talked about vulnerable populations. So that's something I'd like to see represented there.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, like temporary housing solutions.
I, I won't die on this hill, but I don't believe we should have three missions. I think you need one mission, and there are other supporting ways or ways for that. But if you've got three missions, I think you're losing the mission and losing the vision, and so I'm concerned about that. But I know we're trying to capture all, but I do think we need to think of that as more of the umbrella statement and then supporting that with what comes underneath it.
Okay.
Thank you, anyone else? Hearing none, we move to call our regular council meeting to order. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republic which stands one nation, united states, and universal liberty and justice for all.
Do you have an invocation, Alder Person Razak? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Murphy, Mercedes.
Present.
Razak.
Present.
Timian. Finch.
Present.
McNeil.
Present.
Castro.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
No remote electronic attendance, is there public comment at this time? Seeing none, we move to our consent agendas.
Your Honor, I request the approval of committee of the whole council and executive session meeting minutes of July 8, 2025, and consent agenda items 16.1 through 17.9 inclusively.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Razak.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Mercedes.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays that motion carries, non-consent agenda resolutions. Item number 19.1, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application, enter into an agreement, and execute all necessary assurances, answer indications to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for community development block grant entitlement funding under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended for certain projects and programs identified in the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, and specifically in the 2025 Annual Action Plan, and approving the project and program recommendations of the Citizens Advisory Council on Urban Policy, approving the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan, a strategic five-year plan for the use of the community development block grant funds as detailed in the plan's first chapter, 2025 Annual Action Plan, and authorizing the mayor to implement the approved projects and programs upon HUD's approval of the city of Moline's 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and 2025 Annual Action Plan, and to exercise any and all powers necessary to obtain such funding and implement those projects.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Mercedes. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alder Person Razak.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Mercedes.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays that motion carries. Item number 19.2, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Walter D. Lawd, Inc., for project number 1502, 2025 CD BG funded sidewalk improvements for the amount of $146,099.50.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Razak. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alder Person Razak.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Mercedes. Six ayes, no nays that motion carries, non-consent agenda first reading ordinances. Item number 20.1, an ordinance amending Chapter 35, zoning and land development of the Moline Code of Ordinances by enacting an amendment to the zoning map incorporated therein as Section 35-3103, 1212 Sixth Avenue and 1236 Sixth Avenue.
Motion to approve?
Um...
Or, sorry, advance the second reading.
Thank you so much. Is there a second for that?
Pleasant.
Thank you. That was Finch and Razak. Discussion?
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alder Person Razak.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Mercedes.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion to advance the second reading carries, and that's all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Miss Lani's business, thank you, Alder Person Razak, for filling in for me at a meeting with World Relief. I have yet to digest his notes, but they're specifically sharing or discussing impacts of the federal budget choices on the refugee settlement population. So I'd be interested in reading that. We had a good business roundtable sponsored by the Chamber yesterday. I think if we could continue to find ways to educate anyone and everyone about what the Riverfront and Center Plan really has in it, I think there still is our assumptions. I think people, some people don't realize the amount of work that, and analysis and experience that our staff has, especially in economic development, for the recommendations that have come forward. And certainly, there will always be some level of suspicion or distrust that we know what we're talking about. But I just think that that, that was one thing I think we can improve upon is probably making sure that the story is out there like we, like we did at the beginning when we wanted input from the community on what things should look like, right? There were a lot of people involved in all that, and now when we come to the end, it, it, it just had a little bit different feel from a couple people. But overall, it was good to hear their questions, good to be able to discuss plans going forward, the amount of public-private partnership that we hope to have, and just continuing to have a vision for the city that's based on growth, not shrinkage, so. And today, I had the privilege of welcoming folks to Moline for the naming of the Representative Lane Evans Memorial Highway. And those signs will be up, if they're, they should probably be by now today. But they are, it's a portion of the bridge, like around the ramps at Sixth and Seventh Avenue, and then going south. I'm not sure exactly the distance, but that was something that Senator Helfman and Representative Johnson passed in the legislature this year. And so there were a lot of folks related to Lane Evans' professional life here in the Quad Cities that were there today. And it was, it was a good event, but it was hot. Mr. Mercedes.
Nothing on there.
Mr. Razak.
No.
Wait, you don't want to tell people about your meeting? Remember when I said who's next? Razak's got his award meeting scheduled, so, August 7th, 6:00 PM, here at the Hill. Discussion?
Um, congratulations to Ashley Allen Smith for being recognized by the Quad City Business Journal for being one of 40 leaders under 40, so.
Congratulations. We can add to that, too, Angelica Villarreal, who's the head of the Human Rights Commission, was also recognized. Nothing, your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Any staff? Okay, then, we do have executive session.
You're on.
I make a motion that the council convene in executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisition, dash five ILCS 120, dash two C5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mercedes, seconded by Castro. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Razak.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
McNeil.
Aye.
Castro.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Mercedes.
All right, going to closed session, thank you all.